Also, our prayers are with Councilman Heno Jose lost his mother this afternoon. So, keep him on your mind.
Mr. President, also prayers for the family of the officer that was slain in Gary on last week. The funeral was well attended today, as well as the Jones family, the Valian family, and also another family passed away in my district. I can't think right now, but two of those families are very close to me, and they lost two brothers, so.
Clerk Golick will call. Markovich.
Here.
Spitali.
Here.
Vines.
Here.
Kalwinski.
Here.
Ulaki.
Here.
Higgs.
Here.
Emerson.
Here.
Enosum.
Opinker.
Here.
Moving on to reading of minutes.
Mr. President.
Councilman Spitali.
Motion to accept the minutes from June 23, 2014. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Spitali, second by Councilman Emerson to accept the minutes. All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Minutes passed. Approval of claims. Mr. Chairman. Councilman Markovich.
Move for approval of claims from June 18, 2014, to July 9, 2014, for council meeting on July 14, 2014, beginning with claims dated 6/27/14 and ending with claims dated 7/9/14. Claim number 3332 through claim number 3620 for a total amount of $3,917,494.28. I so move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Markovich, second by Councilman Spitali for the accepting of the claims. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
We have one addition, claim number 3621 for Peoples Bank, in the amount of $36,302.77. It's loan payment number one for 2013 E1 pumper trunk for the fire department. I so move.
Mr. President. It's $96,000.
What did I say?
Thirty-two thousand.
Really?
It's $96,000.
Second.
Okay, we got an amendment of the claims, one claim, motion by Councilman Markovich, second by Councilman Higgs. Is there any discussion on the amendment? Clerk Golick will call vote on the amendment. Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Ulaki.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Enosum.
Opinker.
Yes.
The amendment passes eight zero, one absent. Now for the claims as written. Clerk Golick will call vote. Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Ulaki.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Enosum.
Opinker.
Yes.
Claims pass, eight zero, one absent. Moving on to public hearings, there are none. Communications.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
Thursday, July 24, 2014, from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., the Community Health Wellness Fair, a field you're staying at 5927 Columbia Avenue, Hammond, Indiana, 46324. This family-friendly event will feature health wellness, nutrition, women's health, children's health, behavioral health. All educational information will be geared towards living a healthy lifestyle, glucose scanning, blood pressure, healthy snacks, assisted with apply for H.I.P. Healthy plan, Healthy Indiana Plan, a program sponsored by the Indiana, and provides a more affordable healthcare choice for 2,000 uninsured individuals throughout Indiana. H.I.P. provides health insurance for uninsured Hoosiers between 19 and 64. Goodie bags to the first 100 individuals. Thank you for all your wonderful participants, sponsors. Please remember to patronize them, the City of Hammond, Community Corporation, Community Health Network, and Community Hospital, St. Catherine Healthcare.
Any other communications?
Uh, Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
Thirty-first Annual National Night Out. Mayor Thomas McDermott Jr., the City of Hammond, Hammond Community Crime Watch Group, NIPSCO, dated Tuesday, August 5, 24th, at time, 5:00 to 8:00. Wolf Lake Splash Pad National Night Out is designated to heighten crime and drug prevention and awareness, generate support and participants in local anti-crime efforts, strengthen neighborhoods, spirit, and community police partnership, send a message to criminals, letting them know that neighborhoods are organized and fighting back. Events for the evening, Hammond Mayor Thomas McDermott, Hammond Police Chief John Doughty, Hammond Police Department, figure printing, drunk driving, Hammond Fire Chief Jeff Smith, City of Hammond Fire Truck and Police Vehicles, face painting and tattoos for the children, vendors, door products, children, adults, DJ, free hot dogs, chips, and pot. And that's on August 5, 2015.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
I would like to point out in that flyer, Councilman Higgs said that there's going to be drunk driving. We have a drunk-driving simulator, that's what it is. Thank you.
Any other communications?
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
The City of Hammond Veterans Appreciation Day Parade, sponsored by Thomas McDermott, Mayor of the City of Hammond, was going to be here, downtown Hammond, south of Harrison Park, at 10:00 a.m., with a program and a band shell, Saturday, November 8, 2014, at 11:00 a.m. Award Benefit Luncheon at 12:30 p.m. at Carpenters Hall, 712 Highland Street, Hammond, Indiana. Tickets are $20.
Any other communications?
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
Sanitary District of Hammond, 5143 Columbia Avenue, Hammond, Indiana, 46327, 1794. To Anthony W. Higgs, Councilman of the Third District, from Jack Smith Superintendent, HSD Sewer Maintenance, C.C. Marty Wagle, District Manager, 714, 2014, 5600 Block, Maywood, 5636 Maywood Highland, Columbia. Mr. Anthony Higgs, I received your memo on 714, 2014. I went out to inspect and check the area. We did not find a depression at 5636 Maywood. We will have Armaine televised to determine the cause of depression. We televised Armaine to find no problem there. There's a depression three from the Armaine. The problem will be at 5636 Maywood, possible interline. We will go out and remove the depression in the area and re-block the top as a courtesy. Highland, Columbia Engineers Office is aware of the problem there. They will, the work was done by Grimmer Construction. Grimmer Construction will make the repairs to the area of the depression and the paving. Chris Moore of Now's Engineering, Danny Grimmer, and Grimmer Construction, and Mark from the Wash and Kelly are aware of the problem, that they will take care of it. This will be done shortly. Woollett Street was reconstructed. There's a basin structure at 1336 Highland Street, which is part of the street project. The basin will be repaired by contractors. Jack Smith Superintendent, HSD Sewer Maintenance.
Any other communications? Communications is now closed. Moving on to committee reports. Are there any committee reports?
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
Councilors of the House will be bringing out 1420 and 1421.
Are there any other committee reports? Committee reports is now closed. Ordinance, third and final reading. Clerk Golick.
Ordinance 14-20, sponsored by Councilman Higgs, and ordinance for council meetings to begin with prayer.
Mr. President, I move for third and final passage of 1420. I so move.
Motion by Councilman Higgs. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Spitali. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Clerk Golick will call vote on 1420. Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Ulaki.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Enosum.
Opinker.
Yes.
Ordinance 1420 passes eight zero, one absent.
Ordinance 14-21, sponsored by Councilman Higgs, and ordinance amending ordinance number 9249 relating to weeds, debris, and other matter at properties subject to demolition.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
Move for final passage of 1421. I so move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Higgs, second by Councilman Spitali for final passage of 1421. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
Purpose of this ordinance was to alleviate all the stress and strain as it relates to the workers of the city when it comes to abandoning properties. Attorney Cantor did disclose that there is a current ordinance, but we just wanted to fine-tune it so that there's no issues when it comes to the workers going on the property when you have an absentee owner or a bank that owns the property. And simply what happens is usually they put a lien on the property for whatever problems they have to correct on the property. And what I'm finding in my district especially is that a lot of the properties have trees that maybe a storm comes through, it falls, a portion is on the property and a portion is on the sidewalk. So, that alleviates the stress of them having to feel as though they're violating the law when they remove these items.
Any other discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
Um, I, I guess I'm confused because I don't understand how this ordinance is different than the ordinance that we passed just a few short weeks ago.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
I didn't prepare the document. I simply went to our attorney and requested some way to release the burden on some of the people that work for our city in terms of addressing the needs within my district. So, if Attorney Berger can answer the question and clarify any other questions as it relates to this particular ordinance, he would be more prone to addressing it.
Attorney Berger.
The original ordinance kind of covered everything. This is directed specifically for properties subject to the demolition.
That explains it. Any other discussion? Clerk Golick will call vote on 1421. Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Ulaki.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Enosum.
Opinker.
Yes.
Ordinance 1421 passes eight zero, one absent.
President Opinker, that concludes the ordinances for final passage.
Thank you, Clerk Golick. Moving on to introduction of ordinances, there are none, resolutions there are none. New and unfinished business, appeal of revocation of license, Cras Construction.
Is there anybody here that represents the construction company?
State your name, address, and who you are, sir.
Uh, my name is Attorney Eric Neff. I have, my office is located at 300 North Main Street, Suite D, in Crompoint, Indiana. I live in the town of Winfield at 5952 East 107th Place, Crompoint, Indiana, 46307. I am here on behalf of Cras Construction.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
If I could, what was explained in caucus is that there are a number of properties that your company are fixing or have fixed, and they're not up to code. And that's the reason why you're here. That's, I, let me finish, sir. I don't know.
Why don't you let him explain why he's here, Councilman?
Right, okay. Go ahead.
You explain your, what you have, and then we're going to have our Commissioner, Kirk Cook, come up and give his.
Essentially, what has taken place is there, on March 20, 2014, my client, Cras Construction Company, and Wayne, who is one of the owners here, is here today, as well as Dave, who is employed by Cras Construction as well. There's a contract that was entered into between Cras Construction and Mr. Schneider to remove gutters from the rear of the home and dispose only prospect approximately 27 feet, aluminum siding, install flat roof endorman in-house, only flat roof, no shingles. Warranties apply. Now, I could, if you'd like, could I show the council members the contract that was entered into?
Yes, thank you.
Cras then proceeded to have the work done, and they subcontracted it out with a company by the name of Lang Roofing. Lang Roofing actually did the work, and Cras paid Lang Roofing an invoice, an amount of $2,630, on May 1, 2014, and the invoice was for work performed on or before April 25, 2014. The problem that generated this was Mr. Schneider was not very pleased with the roof that was done. So, there were some discussions made. My clients had paid the roofer to do it. They went out and looked at it. It was their opinion that they had installed a better roof than what he had asked for because of the coloring of the existing shingles. It is my understanding then that both Lang Roofing and Cras Construction were to appear at a hearing on June 2 with Mr. Cook's department, and I think there were eight or nine other people there, and my clients were not allowed basically to speak a whole lot concerning this issue. As a result of that June 2 meeting, there was a recommendation that the license be suspended for Lang and Cras. Now, that was the only issue that I was aware of, or that my clients were aware of, for that June 2, 2014 hearing. I don't think there was anything about any other work or permits other than Mr. Schneider. As a result, we then attempted to rectify the situation with Mr. Schneider, and we in fact did rectify the situation with Mr. Schneider. Now, we have settled that case completely with him. I do have a copy of a check. I cannot tell you the exact terms of the agreement due to a non-confidential, or a confidential agreement, but I can produce to you a copy of that check that was written, and it was a significant amount. And Mr. Schneider was very happy with that, and part of the terms of that agreement was that he was to contact Mr. Cook and say, "This problem has been rectified by the partners." Since then, it is my understanding that Lang Roofing has received a temporary license or probationary license, and yet my client's license still remains revoked. So, we're here before this board basically to humbly ask you to reconsider the position and at least give them the same opportunity that Mr. Lang has had. Cras Construction's done a lot of work in the town, City of Hammond for many years. They've done, had very few complaints, and what we are trying to do is make sure that they can continue on with their business. They're not just located in, I mean, they do work all over northwest Indiana. And any specific questions directed towards what took place, I think Dave can answer, as well as Wayne, who is one of the owners. There's two owners. And we apologize that this situation got to this point, but at the same time, my clients did do everything within their power and ability, and with Mr. Lang's assistance as well, to rectify the situation with the homeowner, and I think he's more than satisfied with the work that's been done. Thank you.
Okay, right now, I'd like to hear Commissioner Cook, their side of the story.
It's actually very refreshing to hear a counselor admit that they did a poor job, because that's exactly what they did. They did say that the homeowner has been made whole, and they was absolutely right. The homeowner was made whole, not by Cras, but by Lang Roofing, the subcontractor on the job. They say that they should get off scot-free because the homeowner was made whole, sort of like robbing a bank and saying, "I got caught. Here's the money back. I don't need to go to jail anymore." Well, that's not the standards that we set in Hammond. We ask our contractors to treat our residents fairly, honestly, and openly. None of that happened. Cras Construction is not licensed to do roofs. They would not have been given a roof permit, and it's obvious that they shouldn't have been by the pictures that I showed in caucus. It was simply one of the worst roof jobs that I've ever seen in my life. It was guaranteed to leak. They fixed it by patching it in. It's sort of like you buy a new car and the door is dented, so they give you a gray door, where the rest of the car is white. And that's what the guy's roof looked like, was all patched in. Even after they fixed it, after the homeowner complained, the flashing was wrong. The type and color of roofing was not what was called for on the contract. Okay. We tried to be reasonable in the contractors' board, asked them to come in and explain their actions. Neither one of these gentlemen, were you there? Were you there? None of those gentlemen were here. They sent a manager. Manager decided to break the contractors' board. How dare you call us before the board? We're Cras Construction. We pull hundreds of permits in here. We tried to get that person from Cras Construction to be reasonable, to answer our questions, and he wouldn't do it. He just wanted to break the board. So, we finally said, either you need to answer the questions that we have on this particular job, or you can ask the board to take a vote on your license. And very arrogantly, they said, "Go ahead and vote on my license." And there was a motion to revoke, a second, and unanimously, the entire contractors' board voted to revoke his license. Cras Construction showed absolutely, positively, no inclination to fix the bad job. Addition to that, several weeks prior to that, they had been caught putting a fence in, no permit. Now, why did they not get a permit on a simple fence job? Quite simply, they weren't licensed for it. Cras Construction is licensed to put replacement windows in a home. Not a very difficult job. They're not a general contractor. They're not a fence contractor. They're not, certainly not a roofing contractor. So, when they needed to get a permit on something they weren't licensed to do, they either did not get the permit, or had Lang Roofing, in this case, forge a contract between the homeowner and him to fictitiously get the permit. Did this with the knowledge of Cras Construction. Since the time that their license has been revoked, we went out. I should say, Mr. Vale, my senior building inspector, went out and started looking at different jobs that Cras had contracted prior to them. They have, so far, that we know of today, went out and performed four other jobs with no license and no permit. This is, this is the integrity of the contractor who's got the audacity to come here and say, "Trust me, I'm honest." They're honest when they get caught, but they're not honest when they don't get caught. Had a number of complaints on Cras Construction in the past on high-pressure sales tactics. Not an ordinance violation. I would advise the people to go to their attorney and see their attorney and have them handle it, because I don't have jurisdiction over the law, just have jurisdiction over the ordinances. If Cras Construction had walked into that meeting and said, "I admit, this is a terrible roof. This is a roof guaranteed to leak. I will fix it, and I ask you time to do it." The board undoubtedly would have been reasonable and said, "Go fix it. Come back next month when it's fixed." That's not what they said. They refused to do anything. Now, Lang Roofing, on the other hand, saw a value to having a license to work in Hammond. He went above and beyond. He paid the person enough money, Lang, not Cras, to rectify the problem and compensate that homeowner for his troubles. And that's what we're here for. We're not here to protect Cras or any other contractor. We're here to protect the residents of the City of Hammond, to make sure that they are dealt with fairly, openly, and honestly. And in this particular case, and in other cases, they have not been.
First and foremost, if I could have some time to rebut some of the statements that were made, Cras Construction had nothing to do with the application for the permit for Benjamin Schneider's, uh...
Talk in the microphone.
Cras Construction had nothing to do with the application for the permit that was filled out by Mr. Lang. Mr. Lang was a subcontractor working independently of Cras. Now, Cras has used Mr. Lang on previous jobs. Any reference that Cras, with their knowledge, knew that this was a phony permit is not Cras and Lang have their own issues as to who's going to pay what related to this job. The important part is Mr. Schneider has been paid. There could be an issue between Lang and Cras with respect to any fallout from this matter. What our concern is, and what our desire is, is that Cras was not the primary wrongdoer. If you take a look at your ordinances, I think it's Section 150, the only reason that a license can be pulled would be for negligence or fraud. Cras was not the least bit fraudulent in its actions or dealings with the homeowner or the City of Hammond at that time. This case has been settled and resolved, and in fact, we have another document, when the homeowner complained to Cras, that they both agreed to reduce the price by $100 on April 25, 2014.
The price of what?
The installation of the roof.
By $100?
By $100, and it's signed by Benjamin Schneider as well. If you wouldn't mind, I could show you this document.
That's fine.
So, from our perspective, and I think from a legalistic perspective, both Cras and Lang should have the same punishment for the same type of problem, meaning that if Mr. Lang has a probationary license, I do not see any reason whatsoever while, why Cras Construction should not get equal treatment under your ordinances and by this legislative body. Thank you.
Mr. Neff.
Yes.
Um, a couple of things stood out in my mind. You said that the important part here was that Mr. Schneider was paid. I beg to differ with that. When someone hires a service, they expect the job to be done to perfection the first time around. Mr. Schneider, in my opinion, should not have had to chase anyone down to get restitution for the poor work that was done. Looking at this contract, who, who is Tim? Looking at this contract, who, who is Tim whatever, Kras representative, who signed the bottom of this contract?
Dave.
He's a sales rep. He's been since before.
Okay. So, he knowingly wrote up a contract to do a job for a roof that you're not licensed to do. And then, another thing that stood out in my mind, Mr. Neff said that, I believe the first time you spoke, you said that Kras felt that the roof that was installed was better than what was asked for.
That is correct.
And, and you stand by that statement after everything that's been said?
Dave.
If I can say one thing on that. The customer had a brown roof, shingles, the roof that was.
Get your name, address, and who you are, sir.
Dave Deroff, 718 North Robin Court, River, Indiana, 46319. The roof was a black rubber roof. Lang took the initiative. He looked at the rest of his home, which was brown shingles, and he upgraded to a brown roofing system that sealed down, so it would match the roof. It wouldn't be, so that's what we meant by an upgrade on that.
With a rubber roof and you put shingles on it?
No, 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 no. It's a, it's a, it's a, the rubber roof normally comes in black, but they can upgrade to a brown, which seals down, and it went with the shingles. It was not a shingle in any way, shape, or form. It is a flat roof.
Okay. And if you would indulge me, my colleagues, please. The owner, what is your name?
My name is Wayne Thunberg.
Where do you live, Wayne?
I live in Crown Point in 13109 Monroe Place.
Would you expect this type of work to be done in your neighborhood?
Well, the, no, to answer your question, no. But the intentions were, and what Dave was trying to explain was, is GAF, which is a manufacturer of materials, makes a rubber roof that is just not black anymore. It's a newer material that comes with a warranty. So Roger was intending, his intentions were to match the roof that existed, so it was an upgraded material rather than just having a black roof. So his intentions were to please the customer, and for some reason, the customer feels like he did get a bad job, which we tried to take care of. And that's the whole idea about upgrading. The material itself did cost more than just a piece of rubber, and our intentions are always to make our customers happy. But I feel as though this particular customer, I mean, we did a favor for him. It was a friend of a friend that.
No, he did you a favor.
Well, okay, I'm sorry.
Because he called you to do the work.
Well, we, we tried to make him happy, and the intentions were to match his house, to beautify his house so it looked appropriate, and that's the reason that we went to this other material. Roger decided to do this. We did not decide as Kras Construction. Roger, the, the roofer, decided to go with this, and he thought he was doing the right thing. When the customer saw that, I guess he didn't like it. So his actions, Roger's actions, I'm not sure why he decided to do this, and it's just something that happened that we tried to rectify.
Well, in my opinion, there are a couple of things that are very troubling here. Number one, that you entered into a contract for something that you were not licensed to do. Number two, the fact that after your license was pulled, there was disregard, complete disregard for the authority of the city of Hammond, and you continued to do work. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
I think there were two other incidents that were brought to our attention. Are you guys familiar with those other customers that are complaining about your services?
I'm not aware of it, and, you know, the record with the Better Business Bureau, I mean, when there's a complaint put in, we take care of it. We have not heard of any of these other complaints. We're a very service-oriented company. I have two full-timers that handle all the service. So I don't, I don't know which items you're talking about. It's puzzling. I don't want to dispute them, because I feel like I'm just going to incriminate myself even more, but if we were aware of these situations, they are usually taken care of. But a lot of times, customers do not call us. For some reason, they will come straight to, to you guys. It's alarming, yes. We ask people to call us, and they just don't do it. I don't know why, and I can tell you that we have a very good service record. That's all I can say. You can check with the Better Business Bureau. We've been members for 27 years. We just got awarded. We do not have these kind of situations all the time, but we do so much work that there are situations that are coming about, and we try to rectify everything.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
I understand what you're saying in terms of that, and, and I want you to personally know that as a councilman, I'm not trying to run you out of business, but there are people complaining about your services, and that's not healthy environment for our city.
Well, I understand that, and, and nobody's in business to try and make people unhappy. And, you know, the items that you're talking about, I am not aware of, and I can tell you, the service that we do carry and the efforts that are out there to try and make everybody happy, but there's times that some people, I think, play the contractor, you know? In other words, they try and get something for nothing. I don't know if this is a situation like that, but listen, all I can say is that we do everything in our power, in every town that we do work in, to abide by the municipalities, to buy the permits, to go ahead and, and follow the EPAs on the federal level, and, you know, sometimes things arise. Nobody is trying.
Mr. President.
Excuse me, Mr. Cook, can we see them photos again?
Mr. President, while you're reviewing the photos, I just want to make another comment in regards to this. I guess my question is, if he requested you, and you had a meeting with him, because his job is to make sure that people's homes are safe.
Right.
In that aspect, so why is it, why isn't it, you couldn't come to a compromise in addressing his concerns?
It's my intention, I do, I do know Roger was out there at least three times, four times, to correct all the situations. As far as the flashing, as Cook mentioned, I do know about that. That was due to the fact how it fit underneath the roof, so we went out there and we snipped it up to go even, because one piece was, and it does happen at times, because they're pretty bent. I guess my concern, and I was wondering, as you said, there's, there's other people. Are those names?
Well, what was brought to my attention during caucus, that there were other complaints in regards to your services being rendered to customers. Now, I don't have the notes. I can only go by what was stated to in caucus. So I'm listening to him. I don't have any documentation, so I don't know. I wasn't there. You haven't worked on my home. I'm trying to be the in-between guy, trying to come to a happy medium, but no one wants someone to come to their house and do, render services, and it falls apart. Attorney Cantor deals with this on a regular basis. We got people that don't want to clean up their properties, all types of issues. What can we do to resolve the issue? That's the question.
Well, I, I do take a lot of the services, so I'm one of the two people that Wayne hires on, so I, I can tell you, there's people that'll call up from '03, and if I don't tell them, yes, I'm going to fix it for free, such as a republic window that's out of business and I no longer can get any parts, they get very angry with me. I, I can't get that part. I, I'm sorry. That's the owner that got put in jail from Chicago, I think it was '08, it was about, and they put a million-dollar bond on him and put him in jail. But these are things that, you know, most of the time, customers call us, we go above and beyond. I know the fence, as Cook mentioned, I, I personally worked with, I believe, Mr. Vale on that, to try to resolve that solution, so the two homeowners would be happy between to the each other, between the two neighbors, because we found out that home was owned, or two homes were owned by one homeowner years ago.
Has, has anyone ever filed a lawsuit and civil suit against you?
No, not to my knowledge.
No?
No.
All right, Commissioner Cook, is there anything else you'd like to say?
Just a few things in response to Attorney Neff. City ordinances under Chapter 150 ask the Contractors Board, ask me as the building commissioner, commissioner, to try to judge the good character of the contractor. When we issue a license to a person, we're sending them out to work for the people that we are appointed or elected to represent, and I take that very seriously. If I cannot trust the contractor out there, then how can I give him a license to do it? If I could not hire him for my own home without fear of poor workmanship, how can I say, "Go out and work for other residents"? The owner of the company said that they have this exemplary record. We always take care of our problems. Yet in this case, when the homeowner complained to the contractor over a horrible job, they answered him with, "Pay me, or I'll lean your property and take your house away." I want each of you to think what it would be like to look into the eyes of a homeowner in tears, afraid he's going to lose his home because he did nothing wrong. The only thing he did wrong was hire a contractor who wasn't licensed to do the job. That's who I try to protect. We did not revoke Lang's license for the simple reason is he owned up. He manned up to the situation. He dug into his pocket. He paid the person over $14,000 to rectify the problems. He did everything right, and we put him on probation, and I guarantee you, every single job he does, I'll be watching very carefully. We did not put Kras on it, because they want to sit back and be totally blameless in the situation. Lang, I think I can trust to go back out there. I'll monitor it, but I think I can trust him. Lang, no. And especially since I found out that they just went out in violation and on four different jobs, just went ahead and did it anyway. No license, no bond, no permit, no nothing. I'm just going to work in the city regardless of what the Contractors Board, the Building Commissioner, and the City Council say. Is this somebody that you want to work on your home?
Mr. President.
Councilman Spatelli.
Mr. Cook?
Yes, sir.
On these other jobs with no permit, exactly what were they doing? Were they working Monday through Friday on these jobs?
Weekends. Came out on Sunday. My, my senior building inspector, Mr. Bob Vale, happened to go into a friend's of his house, saw a Kras truck in the driveway. Calls me up, "Is Kras supposed to be working?" "No." In fact, I believe Attorney Neff called me and said, "Can Kras finish jobs we've already sold?" And I said, "I cannot go against what the Building Contractors Board, but I would suggest that you appear next month," which was last week, and say, "Board, I have these jobs. I have the windows in. Can I do these four jobs and finish it?" I would have called the homeowners. I would have said, "Mr. Homeowner, here's the situation. Kras is, had their license revoked, but if you want it, I will give them a permit for this job." They chose not to do so, chose not to reappear before the Board just to go out and do it.
Is that why they did it on the weekends?
Yes, absolutely. They figured it would be out of mind. Right.
Within the last few months.
Yeah, and Mr. Vale personally talked to three of the four homeowners today who would be willing, when we charged them in city court, to testify that Kras did the job.
Thank you. Councilman Markovich.
Kurt, has Kras ever done work for Hammond's Redevelopment Commission? Where they have, where they do those homes and everything? Have they done work for them in the past as a contractor?
I don't believe so. I don't believe so.
Do you guys know if you did or not?
One, one years ago, but it fell, it fell through, yeah.
Now, I mean, I know they talk about this flat roof stuff. They, they got a better grade. I know they're going to colors, but what's the mill thickness of that flat roof you put on there, the brown one? It's probably the same thickness as the black, correct?
Well, it's sort of like, if you went down to Smith and bought a Chevy and they gave you a Ford, and the guy.
No, that, that's not the same thing. I mean, I mean, I understand, because I'm going through roofs now. I'm going through flat roofs now. But, you know, it's a color thing. You're going to pay more for the color instead of black, because they got to add the color and so forth. But is the mill thickness going to be the same that was put on there with the, with the brown and the black? The mill thickness is the same, right?
Yeah, and had he had a warranty, because that's part of the job, is to get a warranty. Of course, on a roof like this, that was totally and completely batched in, nobody's going to give a guy a warranty.
Well, but they've got it in the contract. Twenty, twenty years on the material, five years on the labor. There is a warranty.
You have to get it from the manufacturer. The, um, material is warranted.
Well, I just got a bid from Lang myself, and he handed me all that stuff, so did Lang give the manufacturer's warranty?
He did not on this case, no. That was part of the revi.
Well, I would imagine that, you know, he, he didn't give it to him on this case, but I had, I had Lang give me a bid, you know, and the warranty and the materials, everything was in there.
This is a roof where the bad spots, because part of their contract was replace the underlying sheathing, roof sheathing underneath it, which they totally did not do. They just went over it with the roof, and when they got caught, they went and cut it out to replace the bad spots.
You know what, though, Kurt?
Yes, sir.
And I'm not being a devil's advocate here. I've been going through this. I've got five bids on my house. I got Lang. I'm going through a flat roof on another project that I'm involved in, you know? You talk about replacing sheeting. I mean, it's automatic in the contract at once. They didn't do a complete tear-off, so if they'd have done a complete tear-off and the wood was bad, they're going to replace it, and everybody's going to give you a price of $35 for each four-by-eight sheet of plywood that has to be replaced.
About $45. You're absolutely right. He did not do.
According to this contract, there is a warranty. Now, the questions I have about the pictures, why is there cutouts and overlays put on there? Why is that done?
Because part of their contract.
I'm asking those guys. Those guys, yeah. I mean, not you, because you wouldn't know. You didn't do the job.
It was, it was a soft piece of wood. Roger went out there, cut it up, patched in. I did speak to the homeowner after torrential rains, right after that was done. It did not leak.
Yeah, but why wouldn't you cut that out when you first put it down? You cut a piece off after the fact and overlay.
Had the whole roof on there, and the homeowner is very persistent that there was a bad piece of wood, bad piece of wood. Roger does change wood. That homeowner does have a five-year warranty with Lang. I can tell you that. He does back his work up. He hasn't been the many, you know, he does, he does that. It is in his writing on his. So it is a, it is a five-year.
I mean, I can understand, you got a pitch there, usually for a flat roof, with the way this pitch is, I can understand why you can't go with shingles, because the wind's going to blow the shingles up, tear them off. That's why you went with a flat roof on that side with the rolls and not the shingles compared to the other side. I mean, I can see that in that respect. But why isn't the owner here tonight? That's what I don't understand. I mean, everything's hearsay. He said this, he said that, or whatever. Snyder said this. He's not happy. He got his extra $100. Why isn't he here tonight?
When Lang Roofing, when Lang Roofing, and I said, "Lang Roofing," made restitution to the homeowner, part of the contract that Attorney Neff drew up is that he wouldn't pursue it. If he were to come here today and, and complain to all of you, he'd be in violation of the agreement that Attorney Neff drew up. And that's, that's why we, we started this whole thing to begin with, is to try to make the contractor, number one, excuse me, number one, to make the homeowner whole, and he was. Now, we're here to ascertain the good character of the contractor, whether or not we can trust him to go out and do this to other people. I should say, trust him to go out and not do it to other people. And when I'm looking at a, at a trust factor and whether or not I trust people, I judge their actions both past and present. Past, in, in at least three situations, doing jobs with no permits, um, um, doing subcontracting that they're not licensed to do, and currently going out and continuing to work in violation of everything. Their, everything they have done since this has come about has said, "Mr. Cook, you can't trust me." And if I can't trust him, I can't authorize him to go out and work for other people.
Mr. President.
Simple matter.
Councilman Higgs.
So what are you saying? Are you saying that they were actually put on notice not to do any work, and they continued to do work? Is that what I'm hearing?
Absolutely. Our, our procedure, we actually have a mini-review. Once the Contractors Board votes to revoke a license, Attorney Cantor draws up, presents the facts to the mayor. The mayor takes some deliberation time, whether it's a day or sometimes two weeks, to mull it over and to ask what the questions are, and then he signed it. And that was done by the mayor. After that was done, after Attorney Neff was advised of that, after it was sent to Kras Construction, just went out and did it anyway. On the weekends, where they wouldn't, shouldn't have gotten caught, it wasn't for Mr. Vale having to drive by.
Mr. President.
Councilman Spatelli.
Mr. Cook, this roof did leak, is that correct?
I, I don't, I, it leaked to begin with, and they came back and fixed it, and I don't think it's leaking now.
And that's the patch job here? It looks like.
That's the patch job.
A wing pull on top of the roof?
Right. They had to cut it out and patch it in to fix some bad plywood, which was part of their original job, said to. original job, said to replace all the underlayment. They had to cut it out to put the flat.
But it doesn't say that in the contract, though, Kurt.
Actually, it does.
That wasn't part of the, it doesn't say that in this contract, to replace all bad wood.
The contractor that was presented to us, the Contractors Board, had replaced the underlayment.
Every contract, I've got five bids on mine, and every one of them says that they have to replace the wood.
And you're a smart man. You've probably got five bids from five licensed roofers, right?
Right.
Right. Not a licensed roofer.
But if he's a contractor, which he is in the city of Hammond, correct?
He is a specialty contractor.
Okay, but if he has a contractor's license, isn't he allowed to hire subs?
No.
Which would be Lang, he's not allowed to do that?
To hire subcontractors, you would need to be a general contractor.
Okay, so he's not a general?
He's not a general contractor. He is a specialty contractor. We call it limited license. They are to put aluminum siding, soffit facing windows.
Okay, another question.
That's it.
This license gets revoked tonight. Is there a way, is there a process for them to get their license back?
Absolutely.
To do windows or specialties in a city of Hammond?
Absolutely. I suggested to Attorney Neff two things. Number one, the ordinances are mute on once the license revoked, when you get it back. So, and Counselman Spatelli will testify that, as a general rule, will allow him to reapply after one year. I told Attorney Neff that he can reapply at any time he wants, but I would want them to retest, to make sure they know what the codes are and that they're probably licensed and educated in the trades that they're going to do. And I would want to see some type of action plan that this would not happen again.
Mr. President.
Counselman Higgs.
According to our current ordinance, how does it read in terms of them reapplying?
The ordinances are mute on reapplying. It just revokes the license.
So there's no statute of time?
Right. As a general, we're allowed to have policies, as long as policies are written, and we've established a policy long before I was Building Commissioner, that one year, they could apply. I did tell Attorney Neff that, you know what? Get the homeowner taken care of, come in with some type of action plan, take a test and pass it, and reapply before the board. Boards are full of reasonable people. They'll probably take it under consideration.
Mr. President.
And not just go out. I mean, now, they're gonna go out and work anyway. What do they need a license?
Mr. President.
Counselman Higgs.
So they have a specialty license currently in Hammond?
No.
So they have a general contractor's license?
They had, prior to revocation, a limited license to do replacement windows, siding, soffit facing.
Mr. President.
Counselwoman Vanez.
So Kurt, you do support the decision of the Building Contractors Board, correct?
Yes, I do.
And when would the next testing opportunity be for CRAS?
We offer testing the first Monday of every month.
Okay.
CRAS Construction did apply, and I did allow them to test last month. They got a score of thirty-nine percent of a possible, thirty-nine out of one hundred.
Okay, so that meant that you, that they failed and they would have to take it again?
Yes. You're allowed by city ordinance to test three times in one calendar year.
Okay.
See, I want people to study. I want them to learn. I want them to know what they're doing so we don't have this problem.
Well, thank you on behalf of all of the residents of the city of Hammond because when we spend our hard-earned money to get work done on something we know nothing about, we trust that the contractors that are licensed with the city of Hammond know what they're doing. So thank you for that.
You're quite welcome.
When will they be able to reapply to the Building Contractors Board?
Once they pass the test, and it can be next month, I told Attorney Neff they can reapply. I did counsel him that what I would be looking for, and what I'm sure the board would be looking for, is a very good action plan on how this is not going to happen again. Because I don't know if it was the ownership of the company that supported this type of shenanigan, or the general manager. That's who appeared before the board. I have the impression that the ownership is absent, that they live in Florida or Wyoming, and they're not hands-on managers. I don't know if that's a correct assumption. You live out of town? Right. And sometimes that's the problem. You know, if the boss is not right there to watch what's going on, sometimes they'll start getting a little bit too big for the bridges and take advantage of it. I've seen that happen in other contractors' boards. Hammond wants good contractors. Trust me.
Mr. President.
Counselman Higgs.
Who was our appointee from the council and the board?
Mr. President.
Counselman Spatelli.
I am.
Counselman Spatelli, were you present at the meeting when the recommendation was made?
Yes, I was, Counselman.
And how do you feel about this particular?
I feel that the judgment was made correct, that they should have the license revoked.
Is that a motion, Counselman Spatelli?
That is a motion.
I have a second. Second by Counselwoman Vanez. Any other discussion?
Chairman.
Counselman Markovich.
Here's Mr. Neff would like to talk under question.
Briefly, three points. During the course of these events, I did talk to Mr. Cook. I've talked to Christina Cantor, and I've talked to my clients. I've talked to Mr. Schneider. There's a few important mischaracterizations. Number one, in my discussions with Mr. Cook, tonight's the first time that I learned of an action plan. The second thing is with respect to the board revoked the license or voted to revoke the license on June 2nd, 2014. They were told at that meeting that their license was revoked. That's not the case, according to your order. They can only recommend revocation. I confirmed that with Attorney Cantor. She said that that letter, she wouldn't get to until about ten days. And she, in fact, faxed me a copy of that letter on June 12th, 2014. The mayor is to sign it and date it. I don't have the one that he signed that dated with me, but I do believe it was either that day or the very next day that there was actually action taken. They did have jobs in progress. I had informed Mr. Cook of that, and I advised my clients that they could finish the job until the actual letter was received from the mayor's office with the date on it when the letter, when they are to be revoked, because that's the law. That was confirmed by Christina Cantor, who did talk to Mr. Cook concerning that. Second and more important point is this. That settlement agreement was reached with the homeowner on June 11th, 2014. We are now five weeks into this thing, and guess what? There's been no tear off or no redone of the roof. And he was paid more, fourteen thousand dollars was about five times the original cost of the roof. And sometimes I think that the role of government is not only to represent homeowners, but business owners as well. And we are getting to a point in some particular instances, and I'm not saying that this body is doing it, but it's just a general overriding thing that's going on, that to get tax monies and everything else, we keep asking the business owners to do more and more and more. They have not been sued, to my knowledge. In fact, most of the time, we're suing to collect on monies that are owed because homeowners aren't paying their bill. And that should be a concern as well. I appreciate your indulgence, and thank you very much.
Mr. President. Counselman Higgs.
I think the gentleman made a statement in regards to, we as legislators, our responsibility as legislators is to make sure that the citizens are protected, sir. And certainly, we are, I am, I can't speak for all my colleagues, but I can personally say, I'm not interested in running you out of town and none of that. But it's our responsibility to make sure that they are protected. In saying that, if you're not abiding by the law, we can't agree to say, "Yes, you can do something." It's simple. So that's why I was saying I was in a happy medium in trying to somehow come into a, I guess, a compromise as to how you guys can actually handle the situation without it being revoked. But what I keep hearing is that you guys are violating and still doing the work without even listening to what's being told. I could be wrong. This is what I'm hearing all night. I wasn't there. I haven't been on top of the roof. I'm not a licensed contractor. That's his job, to go in and inspect property, to make sure that it's up to code.
Mr. President.
Counselwoman Vanez.
In due respect, Mr. Neff, you said that you hadn't heard anything about a plan of action. Common sense would only tell me, given the circumstances, that there should be a plan of action. And if you didn't have one, you do now, because you will have an opportunity to test again and pass the test and then reapply to the board. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Counselman Markovich.
What kind of roof is on there now? Is it this roof that's in the pictures, or did Lang put a whole new roof on there? Tear off and put a whole new roof? What's on there now?
That's the roof that's on there right now.
And this is what Lang put on there?
Yes.
And so Kurt, you're saying that this roof's okay that Lang put on there then? That they spent fourteen thousand dollars on?
The material of the roof is fine. It's not what was sold. It's not what was bargained for. The material is fine. The insulation material, no way. Just bad.
So you're telling me this job was fourteen thousand dollars? That's what Lang got into it?
Nope. That's what Lang paid the homeowner, because now, now you've got to tear it off. You've got to replace the underlayment. I mean, they made the matter worse. So Lang Roofing made an agreement with the homeowner, paid him fourteen thousand dollars, which is what other estimates were, to come and undo all of that work and start over from scratch. That was Lang.
Lang paid him fourteen thousand dollars to tell him that the work that Lang did was no good, and he gave him extra money to hire somebody else to go ahead and put a new roof on for him.
He's going to do that, yes.
And, Mr. President.
Counselman Higgs.
And so what you're saying, this roof was put on faulty, so the underlying of the roof is not correct?
Correct.
So Lang put a roof on that's no good, but he paid the guy fourteen thousand dollars to hire somebody else to put a new roof on for him, and everything's okay then? Basically, that's what happened?
Which is why. Because Lang.
Now, if CRAS was gonna put windows in here, then they'd be okay, because they're licensed to put windows in a house. So if they wanted to put skylights or whatever, they'd have been okay. Lang would have put the roof on, and then they put the skylights on. But this is a mess. All my time on the council, it's the first time they've come before us to revoke somebody's license.
Mr. President.
Counselman Higgs.
Also, what I'm hearing is that they only do certain work, so they actually hired someone else to do the work. Am I correct?
Right, but he's not a general.
In this situation, in three situations I know of, yes. In fact, one of the ones we caught him on today, he's got a brand-new roof on the house. Brand-new. I mean, and they may deny it, but I brought up a picture on Google Earth that's six months old, and it shows white roof, and this house got a beautiful brown roof on it now. Just happened in the last couple of days, so.
Okay.
Mr. President, call for the vote.
I was about to do that, Counselwoman Vanez. Clerk Golick will call vote. It was a motion by Counselman Spatelli, second by Counselwoman Vanez. Markovich.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes is the...
Yes is to revoke the license.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes.
Alwensky.
Yes.
Ulacki.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Henosa.
Yes.
O' Pinker.
Yes.
Motion passes, eight zero, one absent.
Thank you.
Any other known and finished business?
Mr. President.
Counselman Higgs.
The nine-hundred block of Tapper and Kenwood, there are a lot of trees growing over the fire. And so I'm requesting that a letter goes to Gary Gleason in terms of getting that cut down and fixed as quickly as possible. I saw more.
There's a motion by Counselman Higgs, second by...
Second.
Counselman Spatelli to send a letter to Gary Gleason in regard to some trees that need to be cut down. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Granted. Any other known and finished business?
Mr. President.
Counselwoman Vanez.
I'd like to announce a couple of community and crime watch meetings that will be taking place within the next couple of weeks. On Tuesday, July 15th, the East Hammond Coleman Crime Watch will meet at the Ophelia Steam Center. That is at 6:30 PM. And on Monday, July 21st, the Columbia Crime Watch and the Lafayette Neighborhood Watch are combining for the summer at the Word Made Flesh Church at 700 Sibley. That begins at 6:30. And that is how change happens, one gesture, one person, one moment at a time.
Any other known and finished business?
Mr. President.
Counselman Higgs.
Also, at 507 Lewis Street, there's a tree. I guess it fell over, and it's been dead for over two years. I'm requesting that we send a letter to the department to have that tree taken down, 507 Lewis Street.
Motion by Counselman Higgs to have a letter sent to the street department in regards to 507 Lewis Street. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselwoman Vanez. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any other known and finished business?
Mr. President.
Counselwoman Vanez.
I would like to announce that the city of Hammond Security Light Program that was reinstated this year has met the maximum of sixty recipients. We, through the generosity of Mayor McDermott and Hammond Community Watch, we were able to get a grant for the security lights, and it was so popular, we've had probably about ninety people ask for sixty lights. So just so everyone knows, we are at capacity and look for the announcement next year in the spring and see our publications when the applications are coming out again. Thank you.
Any other known and finished business?
Mr. President.
Counselwoman Vanez.
I had the honor of speaking at the naturalization ceremony on the Fourth of July at the Wolf Lake Pavilion. It was a very moving experience. Uh, I had the honor of speaking at the naturalization ceremony on the Fourth of July at, uh, the Wolf, Wolf Lake Pavilion. Uh, it was a very moving experience, so many times we take our freedoms for granted, and here were fifty people from twenty-eight countries who wanted to become citizens. They were willing to pledge allegiance to these great United States of America, so I just want to say welcome to those citizens and those new citizens, and next year, if you do have an opportunity to get out to that ceremony, it touches your heart. Thank you.
Any other unfinished business? Unfinished business is now closed. Next is public expression, the first speaker of the night will be Tom Yule.
Good evening, my name is Tom Yule. I live at fifty-nine forty-three Park Place in Hammond. Um, I wanted to come to the council this evening, we're coming up on the first year of your resolution, which included sexual orientation, uh, in the city as a resolution. Um, I don't think many citizens in town know the difference between a resolution and an ordinance. Um, and I don't think that they understand that a resolution is just an intent. From what I know, not once in the last year has anybody actually brought the intent of sexual orientation in civil rights to any contract or agreement with the city. So there's a gap there. And you need to consider having an ordinance which will mandate that in future contracts with the city, they will agree with your orientation statement, so that becomes more of a actuality just than an intention. And I want you to make your aware of that. The other thing is that you now have citizens of Indiana who are same-sex married couples, and while the governor has decided that we shouldn't pay attention to it, Lake County and Porter County have hundreds of people who are now legally married in this state. And this city hasn't taken any action to endorse that position. You want to be a lighthouse to the state for civil rights, you need to bring people here who will not feel like they're being, if they come from Illinois, where a lot of our folks come from, they're not going to give up their right to marriage because they come to Indiana, they're going to demand that they get the same here. So I would also encourage the city council to have an ordinance that recognizes marriages regardless of where they are, from Afghanistan to Zimbabwe, or the twenty other states that recognize gay marriage. The mayor in this city showed great political courage when last spring, he joined with other politicians, and they derailed the constitutional amendment on traditional marriage. The least you guys can do is endorse that position by accepting marriage regardless of where it takes place. And you need to follow through with your intention and city ordinances that make your opinions what your view be, what the state really is going to be. The courts are coming, you have a short amount of time to convince gay people to come to this town. This mayor has been rightfully very happy with the four hundred homes he's had knocked down. I know the council, and I know the mayor would be very happy to say that a thousand families have moved to Hammond, not that they all have to be gay, but it's better to have the houses filled with occupants' owners than just leaving the city.
All right, sir, thank you, your time's up. Next speaker will be Mrs. Lori Zono.
Good evening, Lori Zono, seventy-one forty-two Forest. I've been coming to these council meetings on a fairly regular basis since two thousand nine, and the meeting of June ninth was not the first time the council has acted poorly and made me embarrassed to be a citizen of Hammond. This council has bickered amongst itself repeatedly. Council persons are continually late, they talk over one another, they leave the floor rather than cast a vote, they sort through paperwork rather than pay attention, and they've even walked out during the public expression portion of the meeting. You have complained about transparency, yet you have none of your own. Until recently, the most up-to-date minutes online were from September. The website has recently been redesigned, and the minutes, minutes are now up to date. Why aren't agendas available online, with ordinances and resolutions in their entirety? As a matter of fact, the agenda for the June ninth meeting was posted outside, it was two pages long, only one page was visible, the other one was stapled to it and underneath it. I get emails, agendas emailed to me from other towns all over Lake County, they don't seem to have a problem, we can't even post our agendas online. Might I suggest you jump into the twenty-first century, the water's warm. I also think some of you have forgotten that you work for the residents of Hammond, not the other way around. You have forgotten your purpose, it's not to advance your agenda or your opinion, it's to represent those of the citizens of Hammond. This is not the place for you to pat yourself on the back, boast about your accomplishments, or complain about your exclusions, do that outside the chambers. You are not supposed to do what serves you best, you're supposed to be the voice of the residents of Hammond, and you're supposed to do what serves us the best. These are serious times in Hammond, and as such require serious people to do serious work. If you don't like your fellow council people, you don't have to, but you do have to work with them. So I would suggest that you check your attitudes, your egos, and your agendas at the door, and step up and get the job done, or step aside and let someone else do it.
Thank you, Lori. Next speaker will be Mr. Paul R. Buck Senior.
Good evening, council. My name is Paul Buck Senior, I'm a precinct committeeman in the second district under Mr. Ullaki. First of all, I'd like to say thank you to the councilmen at large for coming out, helping clean up the Ophelia Steen Center, and also helping over at the Boys and Girls Club, beautifying the Boys and Girls Club, as well as my councilman, Mr. Ullaki. I'm here today because I know there's a code of ethics with you all. And a few weeks ago, Mr. Higgs jumps out of his car screaming and hollering at my wife in a forceful manner. Thank God for Jesus, you know, twenty years ago, we'd have been dealing with this in that end of the building. For him to jump out of his car in an aggressive manner, hollering and screaming at my wife because she stopped him from running over a kid that he did not see, is uncalled for. And when he calls my phone and leaves messages about a council lady being racist, don't leave that venom on my cell phone. She's working in your community and you're calling her racist, how dare you? I think that seed has went to his head, and I, I think he's forgetting reality. So to help you, uh, keep your senses, and you don't wind up like Jesse Jackson Junior, I'm gonna do everything I can to get you out of that seat for the benefit of your health.
Mr. President? First and foremost, let me respond to Mr.
Point your quarter.
Mr. President?
Counselwoman Vines is right.
I make.
We're, we're in the middle of.
Mr. President, I make a motion that we open it back up for un, new and unfinished business.
We have one more gentleman to speak. Mr. George Stoya.
George Stoya, Robertsdale, I agree with Lori.
Mr. President?
Sir, Counselman Higgs?
I make a motion to reopen on the new unfinished business, I summon.
Motion by Counselman Higgs, second by Counselman Markovich to go back to unfinished business, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
First and foremost, let me say that it's never my intentions to disrespect or mistreat anyone. Certainly, uh, I was going down the street, and I tried to explain that to you previously, but since you're here, and we can make the record clear, that I was going down the street, a young kid was in the alley, your wife stopped. All I did is exited my vehicle after I passed the alley, and simply said, "Did you see the kid?" I never hollered, never screamed, I was afraid that the kid was gonna get hit. And if she took it out of context and thought that I said anything that was disrespectful, because you wasn't there, she could have approached me with it. All she said is, "Do you know who my husband is?" That was it. So, first and foremost, you have to have clarity as to what transpired in the process, and you're welcome to do whatever you need to do in regards to anything pertaining me and serving my citizens. I'm prepared for that election, the past one, and the future one. So that's not an issue, so to even approach me in that matter doesn't even bother me. The reality of it is, I never did anything to offend your wife, it was never my intentions to, actually, I wouldn't even stop if it wasn't a kid in the alley, and the kid almost got hit, true or nothing. Simple as that, that's all I have to say.
Yeah, motion to go back to regular business?
I summon.
Motion by Counselman Higgs, second by Counselman Markovich, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting to, or, need a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion by Counselman Markovich, second by Counselman Higgs, all those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is.